Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We're starting just a couple of minutes late. Our study session went a little bit long this evening. We note that we have all council members present and accounted for. Our opening ceremony tonight will be from Councilman Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you here on the council have seen over the last day or so, Mr. Conde is sending out pictures of a wrapping event that was happening for the Giving Tree and the great work that our police department does. I found a video online. It's probably five years old. You'll see some of our police officers that are in there that have elevated their positions in the department. But it does give a description of the Giving Tree program and the fine work that our police department does during this Christmas season. So if you could go ahead and play that. Jake?
The way it all started, I've been on a call where a four-year-old boy had got a hold of a handgun and shot his two-year-old brother and killed him. Because of that, we decided we wanted to help that family for Christmas. They had an empty Christmas tree sitting out and they weren't going to have much for Christmas. And this really put a damper on holidays. You saw us as the bad guy coming to arrest him. And now we've got to bring him Christmas. Every year, I think when we think about that one call and that one reason that we do this. I think when we started doing that with that one family, I think we did two families by the end of that season. It's progressed from there to seventy-one, seventy-two families this year.
I understand the importance of family. I have a family myself. And I can only imagine what it would be like if my children had to go without for whatever reason. So to be able to help out these children that really do have a need. And not only to help out the children, but when we're helping out the children, we're also helping out the parents. And that helps out the family as a whole. And that's really the reason behind it.
So each kid gets two shirts, two pants, coat, a pair of shoes, a hat, a glove. And then we ask each child to give us three once, something they want. Usually something small, sometimes they put something big. So every officer at our unit, Community Services Division, they all come over and grab a name. Some of us, like me, that had to start, they got more than one, many more than one. So we also have a lot of businesses that donate a lot of support from the community that people come over here and grab a name. We're able to, with the funds we have and with the community that comes out and grabs them, we're able to help a lot of these kids.
You know, oftentimes, we focus on police officers as being really hard and tough and maybe not being as emotional and understanding. And I think that this really shows that there really is an emotional side to, especially the police officers that are involved in the program. We really do care about the community that we serve. And it reminds me of several years ago, an incident where a family was actually caught on fire, it burned, pretty much burned down to the ground. The police officers that rallied together and took some of their own gifts for their own family and took those with their family so they would have something themselves. Really kind of demonstrates that the whole aspect of giving really is important. And we're just as thoughtful and caring and may really do care about the community that we serve. It may not be the largest amount of help, but every little bit does count.
You know, the day of, the Santa Claus is there handing them their stuff, that's really what makes the whole thing worth it. It's a lot of work during the process. A lot of times, we get frustrated with it. It's a lot stressful to make sure everybody gets it. But when we're there, when the kids are getting, receiving their stuff, you know right then it's worth it. We have families last year that came up to us and thanked us personally, shake our hands with tears in their eyes. And we know that we're doing something that is sort of awesome. All the money and all the time and all the effort is worth it.
Again, I just would like to thank our police department, not just them, but all the employees of the city who get involved. I know that they spent most of the day over their wrapping presents at the Valley Thermal today. And they do a great service for the community. I'd just like to extend my gratitude and thanks to the police department and the rest of the city staff who get involved. Kevin, how many families did they take care of this year? Do you know?
I wish I knew that number, sir. I don't. I think it's in the eighties. A lot, so far, far from the three we have.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Just have to check and see if there are any scout groups here. We usually recognize them now. None of you look like boy scouts. Approval of the minutes from December 1st to the council for a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes from December 1st, 2015.
Second. The motion is before us. Any discussion? Seems like they're all right the way they are, so we'll place set for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Say no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved. We now go to our comment period. We have a couple of people who have signed up. We do indicate to you that you should limit your comments to five minutes. It's not a debate or anything. The time is yours to use as you deem appropriate, and we will quietly listen. So we begin with Mike Baker.
Good evening. Been a resident here in West Valley for over twenty years. I'm also a four-minute Gray Salt Lake Electric, done many projects here in West Valley. Reason I'm here tonight is I'm very concerned about the theft on job sites. In the last two years, we've built two fairly large tilt buildings here in West Valley, and GSL's total is over $10,000 in loss. My colleague Lawrence here can probably attest even, he has even more damage and loss on the job we're currently building. On December 6th, well, in the last two months, two weeks, we've installed an alarm on our office trailer, on GSL's office trailer. We monitor, and this is in an enclosed area, has a fence around it. We install a security alarm system that calls me, calls him after, calls me. And it's supposed to also call police to let them know that a break-in is in progress is on three ConXs and our office trailer and Leighton Construction's office trailer. On December 6th, I received a phone call at 5:15 in the morning, this is Sunday morning, that we were being broken into. I asked them if they had called West Valley Police Department, and they said yes. A few minutes later, West Valley Police Dispatch called me, wanted to verify the address. And at the time, they told me they don't dispatch officers to a break-in when a monitoring company calls. I asked them to please send an officer. When I arrived, gate was open, gate had been broken into. They had tried to pull the locks, but it looks like when the alarm system went off, it scared off the thief. Four days later on the eleventh, or excuse me, five days later, at midnight on the 11th, I received another phone call. At the time, they told me that they had called West Valley PD. I live, the job site is at 2291 South Commerce Center Drive. If anybody looks that address up, there is no, it will not come up on that quest. For some reason, the road's been there for probably over two years now and still not show, does not show up on most city street maps. When I arrived on site, or near the site, I drove around, there's two buildings out there, we call them 201 Commerce, 201 number six, 201 number seven is currently being built. I drove around 201-6 to the backside so nobody would see me. I went around on the north, excuse me, the south end of the building and lo and behold, there's a guy hopping out of the forklift, running away from the site. At that point, I called 911. It was approximately almost 25 minutes before somebody arrived at the 911 call. After that, we had waited another 15 minutes for somebody to arrive to...
One minute.
Had to wait for somebody to arrive for backup. Now, after all this was done, I received a phone call, I didn't know if it was a phone call from our alarm company saying that West Valley City does not respond to alarms unless somebody's on the premise. So my question is, does that mean if my house is getting broken into, I buy a nice fancy alarm, my house is getting broken into, I have to be there to confront them, I can call 911 because we won't answer? That's where I'm wondering, is there, how do we fix this problem? I know you get, they get lots of other phone calls and some nuisance, but this job site's been broken into nine times in the first building, and we're up to number four on this building. So if you can help me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, Lawrence Stanton.
Yes, I'm Lawrence Stanton. I am superintendent for Leighton Construction. I'm about 21 years with them. We do a lot of work for you guys, with you, with you guys, support you guys. We've done, the building department's been wonderful. The police officers have been very pleasant to deal with. This is the same subject, our break-in was, Leighton took a $35,000 loss on one of them. My concern is, is our average response time is in excess of an hour. And on a 911 call, response time was 45 minutes. I feel that my life is in danger because I'm there, the perpetrator's there. Do I go after them? I am directed not to by my office, but I, and I don't know where to go with this. I just want somebody to know that this is happening. It's becoming very regular. It feels like... Our alarm went off this last time and the perpetrator, the burglar, was still on site. So maybe he's monitoring the response times and knows he's got an hour once an alarm goes off before anybody's going to show up. But I, when I get the call, I can't, should I stay at home and wait? Then I would have nothing when I got to work. It's not, it's all material things, but I'm looking forward to doing a lot more work with West Valley City. I'm gonna, I've been here, I'm gonna be here, but I just want somebody to know that I have some big concerns and I would love to not have to come express my concerns again. That's about all I've got.
Thank you for your comments. Then with that, there was no one else here for public comment tonight? Okay. Then next, we go to our city manager for comments according to our agenda.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any comments, but I did have a question for the gentleman, just I have not to do. Have you already spoken with the police department?
We have not.
All right. My recommendation would be give it to Chief, who's sitting here behind me right after the meeting. He'll be able to gather the, he might, well, I'm sure he won't have any information for you on the particular case right now, but he'll be able to at least get you, get more information from you so he can explore the response time questions, all that sort of thing. You're correct on the, on the alarm response. We don't respond to just monitoring services, alarm calls. We haven't for ten-plus years. The reason for that being there were all kinds of, way too many false alarms that we were responding to and it was taking too much time. The solution to those problems are other, other than just having the officer respond on any individual alarm call, but the chief will be able to have more conversation with you about that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you to the council for any comments.
Mayor, I have a comment. Tonight is Councilman and Mayor Proton Corey Rushden's last meeting with us. And he has been a diligent and valiant servant of our city. Sorry to see him go. He's been somewhat of a mentor on a personal note. But he's been a good steward for us, whether it's improving our housing standards, coming up with the idea for the idea house, improving individual neighborhoods and streets, the residency incentive for the police, he was a leader on that, bringing more residents into city government, into our projects, our councils, our boards and commissions, and having them participate as co-creators in our city, being connected and communicating with other branches of governments locally, on a state level, and also nationally. He knows everybody, he's friends with everybody, they respect him. And working on our Jordan River and all issues related to water. He knows everything about that and has led us in the right direction on all of those things. And as a public servant, Corey doesn't want any kind of public ceremony or party or anything else. He just wants to go on about his business and leave his office with the dignity that he's demonstrated throughout his service. But I wanted to recognize him tonight, and I'm sure that all members of the council share these feelings with me, because we probably don't want to go into our roasting him or anything. But Corey, we appreciate your service.
Well, I guess I have to rebut that now, huh?
Only if you want to.
Yeah, I'll, I just, I want to, you know, there's nobody who's said this that I think has loved being city council member of their hometown more than me. And I just wanted to speak quickly to three groups here that have made this a very good and positive experience for myself, my family, and hopefully the city in general. First and foremost, you know, I want to give a big thanks to our city manager, Wayne Pyle, and his staff. Wayne works very hard on behalf of the city council and the residents to fulfill the vision that we all have of self-determination and self-government, and I appreciate his efforts. I also appreciate how Wayne has that West Valley attitude of wanting to continually prove himself and his job, as well as to get the 700, 800 employees that we have to continually try harder in their efforts. And so that makes me very positive and optimistic towards West Valley. Second group I want to talk about quickly is that, you know, a lot of people say, oh, being a city council member is a very thankless job. And, you know, in some ways it is, in some ways it isn't. And the one way that I think most that it isn't is because there's some really good perks. And the first perk is, is the people that I've been able to associate and work and grow with. Steve Vincent, Russ Brooks, Joel Coleman, Carolyn Byrd, Dennis Norfelt, Mike Winder, Don Christensen, Karen Lang, Steve Bueller, Tom Hune, Ron Bigelow, and Lars Norfelt are among the finest people that I've ever been able to associate with. And I'm proud to call them not only council colleagues, but as part of our council family. And so thank you to all of you for welcoming me every Tuesday to come home to this family and work on our common goals and dreams for this city. And last, just to, you know, the residents that put up with us and have given me opportunities to serve them. And, you know, I think that the city, as I said, I'm very optimistic towards it. And I think as long as our staff, our council, and our residents will look at the challenges we face in the city as opportunities, we'll be well-served. I think of Dean Drive, now it's really a metaphor for our city, that it has certain challenges and certain things that need to be improved, but a lot of good things going for it. And look forward to the day that Dean Drive is a crown jewel of our city, like many other things that we've done this. And so in summary, just real excited for the future of West Valley and a thanks to all those that I mentioned tonight.
Any others? Or Mr. Bueller has spoken for, Councilman Bueller has spoken for many of us. Thank you, Corey, for your great service. I'm sure we haven't heard the last of you somehow, but you'll be around somewhere helping With that then, we move forward on our agenda for public hearings, application number GP 12015 filed by West Valley City. This is an update to the city's general plan, which occurs on a regular basis. This is a major update mainly affecting issues that have changed in our city over the last few years. And then an update just on the information that's in the plan. Now, for those listening in or here tonight, this is the second time we have heard this issue, actually the third, while it was on our agenda once before and we held it over for a while. We consider all of these in a study meeting. They always come before the council at least twice. So the issue before us is this general plan update, and so we will be considering that tonight. So with that introduction, we will now open up, let's see, a public hearing for application GP 12015. And so we invite anyone who is here from the public who would like to speak to this issue to come forward to the microphone. And please be careful, don't knock each other down as you rush up here. This is typical for most issues that come before the council, in case you're wondering. Seeing no one who has comments on this, we will close the public hearing portion and come back to the council. And now the council will consider action on what we refer to as ordinance 15-38, adopting an update to the city's general plan for calm interaction.
Mayor, in the study meeting last week, all of my questions were answered. I don't know of others, but with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance 15-38. Second?
We have a motion and a second before us. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge all the work of our employees on this and our own council on this plan. It's been two years pretty much in the making. And I also acknowledge that our work is still not done and that this is a living document that we'll revisit again and again and again. And I think we're in a good place, and so I'll be voting to approve this action as well.
From, just one clarifying question, it's the exact same document that we originally received a few weeks ago, correct?
Okay, that's a, using a fairly broad statement at that point, I'll see if I can narrow it a little bit. So it is an exact copy of the document they were provided with, the changes or additional information or review that we've added over the last week or two. I believe the short answer is yes. I don't think we changed anything over the last few weeks as we've examined.
Okay. With that then, seeing no further comments, we'll place it for a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. I did vote aye even though there was an error in it, but we can correct that the next go-around in five years.
We can, of course, also, which is probably worth mentioning for the audience and anybody who's listening in, Mayor, yeah, make amendments to that general plan in time, so we could make corrections.
If it were a serious one, I would have voted no, but it's not. It's just a minor error.
I would just, yes, there might be more than one minor error in there too, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, with that then, we go to our next public hearing relating to application Z-32015. This also filed by West Valley City for a zone change on Lehman Avenue. This is an area the city has been redeveloping. Those of you who are familiar with the area will have seen a lot of changes taking place there. This takes some residential areas and changes them to be in conformity with the overall plan that has been in place now for, I don't know, it's been several years, I know, before I came on the council. How long has that been, Mr. Pyle?
The actual acquisition and redevelopment of the area's been at least seven years.
Seven years, but the original plan for what we were going to do there's been seven years?
The original planning effort goes back at least 18 years, my whole tenure.
Okay. And during that, okay, during that time, we've been acquiring property and since much of this property, I believe now all demolition on that property, no, not all of it's been taken care of, but...
There's still two residences.
Two residences there.
And they'll be down as well.
Yeah. And so that's been an ongoing process and will continue over time as we redevelop that. And this changes the zoning to city center zoning in conformity with the overall plan that we have. That is the issue before us. Having brought that to your attention, then we will go to a public hearing and invite comment from the public. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on this application? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for your calm interaction for ordinance 15-41.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 15-41.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second is before us, the motion is properly there. Any further comment? Seeing no further comment, we'll place it for a vote and turn to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We now go to item eight on our agenda, resolutions, resolution 15-199. This is to authorize an amendment to an agreement with the Community Development Corporation of Utah for the conduct of our Home Facelit program. This was to change, we had expended most of the funds that originally been allocated to that program. I believe the original amount was $150,000. And we have done, I believe, three projects. And in order for this to continue, we have changed some language on our agreement on it and also on how the funds will be authorized a little bit, opening that up a little bit. The program has been very successful in the view of the council, and so this will, resolution will accomplish that for the future. With that then, to the council for any calm interaction.
It's getting close to Christmas. Mayor, move for approval of resolution 15-199.
That's right. Motion and a second, properly before us. Any further comment? Seeing no further comment, we'll place it for a vote and turn to our city recorder for that vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Rushden?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We now go to item nine on our agenda, the consent agenda. We have two resolutions on there, 15-200 and 15-201. One is to ratify the appointment of Shelley Day as chair of West Valley City Arts Council, the other, the reappointment of Susan Klinker as chair of the Utah's Cultural Celebration Center Advisory Board. And those are fairly routine, just need our ratification for those appointments. So, a motion from the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda.
We have the motion, a second?
Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say, excuse me, to the city recorder for roll call. Getting too anxious here.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Ashton?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that concludes our business. Any final comments? We will not be holding a city council meeting until, I guess it's the 5th of January. We will not hold it next week because of Christmas, and the following week is the fifth week, Tuesday of the month, where we traditionally throughout the year do not hold meetings on the 5th Tuesday. With that, that concludes our business for this meeting, and apparently for this year. Any further comments?
Mayor, I would move for adjournment of the West Valley City Council.
Thank you very much. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you very much for your work.